All right, you're good.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for Wednesday, May 21st, 2025. Notice has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and sending a copy to the Montclair Times, Star Ledger, and Herald News. This is a public hearing in which any members of the public are welcome to attend. The meeting agenda is available on the Montclair website, as is a link to the township's YouTube channel where the hearing can be viewed live or after the fact. The hearing is also being televised on Channel 34. And I will call the roll. Chair Harrison.
Here.
Vice Chair McCullough.
Here.
Mr. Coffield.
Here.
Mr. Church.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Moore is not present. Mr. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Vera is not present, and Ms. Grant is not present. Mr. Griffith.
Here.
Mr. Cruz is not present, and Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
All right.
The first item is the approval of the minutes for the April 16th meeting. I have just a couple of changes. On page 10, line 390, quit modified side yard setback variance since we gave them less than they originally asked. And then I guess a question for Mr. Sullivan. We denied the height variance, but should we also put a condition on that says that the height of the garage shall not exceed?
Yeah, I think that's the.
Okay. The 15-foot ordinance requirement. And then on page 11, line 400, delete with the Board of Education, and delete approval of, and delete plans on line 401, so it reads to discuss ongoing litigation regarding the development at Woodman Field. Anyone else with any other changes to the minutes? If not, someone want to move the minutes with those changes?
Move to accept the minutes with the changes?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
And we have the resolution for the Kissel and Menzel property. I have to abstain, so others need to speak.
Who's eligible to vote?
So Vice Chair McCullough, Mr. Church, Ms. Harris, and Mr. Simon are eligible to vote.
All right, I have no corrections to the resolution. Does anyone else have corrections to the resolution?
No.
Yeah. All right. Would someone then move for the approval of the resolution?
Move to approve the resolution, as tape.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain.
Two abstentions, I believe.
Then we have the resolution for the Seltzer property on Chestnut Street. I have one change at the end of number one on page one. Quit reverse flaglot-like configuration since it's backwards of a normal flaglot. Any other changes to that resolution? If not, someone want to move the resolution with the change?
I'll move the, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move the resolution with the changes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay. The resolution for the property at 161 Summit Avenue. On, same, same, well, one additional change. The first whereas quit instead of requested, modified. And it should, in the second whereas, it should be C1 and C2. And then add the third condition about the garage height not exceeding the 15 feet permitted by the ordinance. Any other changes to that resolution? If not, someone want to move the resolution with those changes?
Move to accept as modified?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
The first application of that is Rowan Deano for property.
I think we have one more resolution for 533 Park Street.
What did I do with it? I thought, mm, okay. It's because I don't have any changes to that resolution. Does anyone else have any changes?
Move to accept the resolution?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now, the hearing for Rowan Deano for property at 48 North Fullerton. This is an application to construct in addition to the rear of the existing mixed-use building and convert the dwelling into a two-family dwelling. Property is located in the OR3 Garden Apartment and Office Building Zone. Is designated on the Township Tax Maps as Block 2310, Lot 4. Applicant is requesting a variance from Montclair Code Section 347-62 and 347-57 to permit side yard setback of 4.8 feet on the southerly side of the property, whereas the ordinance requires a minimum side yard setback of 10 feet, and a variance of Montclair Code Section 347-75 and 347-45 to permit the building coverage of 38 percent, whereas the maximum building coverage permitted is 25 percent. Are taxes paid? Is the notice in order?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Mr. Tramulak, I give your appearance. Proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. Alan Tramulak appearing on behalf of the applicant, Rowan Deano. My client's the owner of 48 North Fullerton Avenue. This is an application for two C variances in connection with the plans to construct a 331 square foot addition to the existing building located again at 48 North Fullerton Avenue. As the chairman noted, the property is in the OR3 zone. It's an interesting lot. It's a narrow 40-foot lot that's sandwiched between two larger vacant lots on each side of the property, both of which are owned by Immaculate Conception Church. The lot to the north of our property has a paved parking lot, and the property to the south, which is also vacant, is basically a grass lawn but with no structures on that property. And we have this narrow 40-foot lot between those two. The existing building is a mixed-use building with a medical office and one apartment, and the plans are to eliminate the medical office, create a second apartment, which was resulting in the building being converted to a two-family dwelling. The two variances, a side yard variance and a building coverage variance. I have one witness to present, who's the project architect sitting to my right, who I'd like to call as our witness, Ivano Marulanda.
Okay. Before we do that, I'm just going to swear in our board professional. This will be for both hearings tonight. Zan, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
Just state your position with the township.
Zanab Ghosni, Assistant Planner.
Okay. Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
And state your name and address, please.
Ivano Marulanda. Last name is M.A.R.U.L.N.D.A. My address is 65 Springfield Avenue in Springfield.
Marulanda, would you provide the board with your educational background and your professional qualifications, please?
Uh, yes. I graduated from University of Alba in Colombia. I am a licensed architect. My license is current. I have been working for James Agüera, PA for over 23 years. I have testified before zoning boards and planning boards in Elizabeth, Springfield, Neptune, Piscataway, Rattan, I'm sorry, Hillside, Fenwood, Roselle, Newark. And I was here for the Montclair Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay. And have your qualifications been accepted by all the boards you've testified to?
Yes.
Okay. And you prepared the plans for this project?
I did.
Yes. Do you chairman offer him as an expert in the field of architecture? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you, you know, would you just take the board through the plans for this project? And, you know, you can use the screen if you'd like, however you want, however you're comfortable presenting.
Just press the swipe, the power button.
Okay. Got it. Yeah. Oh, I think it's off. So, yeah, we're here for an addition to the existing building. The whole addition will be at the rear. It's 331.92 square feet. Right here, we're seeing sheet number G000. And so the entire addition is all the way to the back. We are aligning ourselves with the existing left side setback of the dwelling. And then we're also aligning with the right side at that point of the existing dwelling and extending out. We are meeting the front setback from cottage, and we are meeting the right, the right side setback. We are asking for a variance for the left side since the existing dwelling also is within, is, is, is not compliant with the left side setback. We're also eliminating an old ramp on the right side and front of the building. And the good thing is, so the addition is going to give us a variance for coverage. Right now, we have 31 percent covered, and we're increasing it to 38 percent.
That's building coverage.
That's building coverage, sorry, yeah. But as we remove not only the ramp, small steps, and also remove some of the asphalt, we're also decreasing the impervious. So we were at 92 percent, and we are decreasing it to 74 percent. What else can I tell you on that side? Okay, so go to the next one. Okay, this is sheet G100. The street, North Fullerton Avenue, is to the bottom of the page. The first plan on the left is the existing basement. There is no work done to the basement. The next one in the middle is the first floor. Most of the house is existing, but we are converting that office into residential area, residential apartment. So on the front, we have the big space. It will be the living dining area. Then we have steps to go out to the side, or in the back, we have another room that is, will be the bedroom of that apartment. Then we have a space that will be a study. We are keeping the existing bathroom and powder room that are there. And to the back, that's where we're adding a new kitchen. The kitchen also includes laundry closet. And that has an exit to the rear with a new stair to go down, and then a patio area that is going to be with pavers instead of asphalt. On the next page, we have the existing second floor. So the existing apartment is on the second and attic floors. And the modifications that we're doing there is that on top of the proposed kitchen, we're going to have a terrace. So we modified in the apartment where we moved the radiator, and we created an opening so there will be a terrace for that apartment that can go on top of the new addition. In the middle, we have the existing attic, no work there, and to the right, the existing roof, no new work there.
So on the second floor, there's no expansion of the living spaces?
Correct.
The only change to the second floor is the terrace above the first floor addition?
Correct. Yes. No, we're not adding any footprint. It's just able to enjoy the terrace by using the roof of the addition.
Okay.
And this last page, we have some photographs of the existing building. Number one is the front of the building. We're going to repair and improve the steps leading to the house, as well as the railing. And then the ramp that you see on to the right, that's going to be all removed. Then on number two is the left side, which there's no change going on to that side. Then to the bottom left, we have the rear. And then you see that small volume at the first floor. That's where it's extending where we put in the kitchen. The parking will maintain on that side, but we're going to remove a lot of the asphalt there that you see. And then to the right, we have a proposed elevation, that's how it's going to look. We already went to the Historic Society, and they had two comments on, on the rear elevation about an overhang that we had. And we were proposing vinyl railing. So they said, eliminate the overhang, which we did. And they say no vinyl, so we're proposing wood composite for the railing on the terrace and on the stair.
So it's currently five parking spaces on the property. Is that correct?
Correct.
But you're adding some green space in the rear?
Yes.
Including a, a little landscape buffer, I believe?
Yes.
Separating the parking from the property to the north?
Yes.
Okay. And reducing the number of spaces from five to four?
Yes. We reduce it to four, but four still complies with RSIS.
Okay. Right. I don't think I have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to begin by getting some clarification in terms of this property. So can you first speak to how this property is currently being utilized?
Right. So on the first floor is a medical office, and then second and attic is an apartment.
So on the first floor, were there any special modifications to that space to accommodate a medical office that needs to be changed in order to convert that to residential?
No, they kind of, the layout worked pretty well for the apartment. It used to be a house, so just going back to be an apartment. So we didn't need to do much inside besides the addition of the kitchen because we didn't have one.
So no walls will need to be removed?
No.
No windows changed? I mean, other than updated, perhaps, or?
Right. Just in the back where we were attaching it, but that's it. Nothing else inside.
All right. Then, and, and so then the, the space on the second floor in the attic, was that always one unit?
Correct.
Okay. And so you're maintaining the integrity of that?
Correct.
Oh, and, okay. Then the, the basement has laundry facilities?
I believe they had something, but the first floor is going to use the new laundry proposing on, onto their, their kitchen. So they won't use that laundry that is downstairs.
So the first, the first floor unit will have its own laundry facilities?
Correct.
The second floor unit, does it have laundry, or will it be utilizing?
The second floor, I believe, actually, the second floor also has laundry on the fourth. So basically, I think they used to wash on the medical office downstairs. They no longer need to do that. They'll be able to wash it on the first floor.
Right. So then what will become of this, of this facility down in the, in the basement?
That will be eliminated. It will be just part of storage, which is what the basement is used, mainly storage. There's no really use of anything else there.
So you're saying that, you're speculating, or you know that in terms of the bathroom, the laundry, access to laundry and all of that, would that be eliminated, or would that just?
The laundry will definitely be eliminated, yes.
Okay. And, and so would both units have access to that space for storage, or, I mean, what's the, do you know if there's a plan for that?
Uh, no. The basement is, is used for the first floor.
So the, okay, so the first floor has access to the basement, so if they want to put storage down there, whatever, they're able, they're free to, they're free to do that.
Correct.
But the second floor apartment would not have access to the basement?
No.
But the air conditioning units are there in the basement, and they're servicing the entire complex?
The first floor. They're serving the, the first floor. I think in the, in the attic, they have the unit for the second floor.
Okay.
Because it's, when it was an office, it was, that's how it worked. It was the first floor office, basement was part of the office. And then the apartment has always been second floor and attic.
So essentially, they're zoned.
Yeah, they're always been divided that way, yes.
And the same would hold true as far as other utilities, electricity, so on and so on?
Right. Right now, they're split in two. So what the office used, now it becomes the utilities for the apartment.
All right. So now, as we, you said that the first floor plan will have a new kitchen, which will be to the back of, of the building?
Correct.
And there'll be, there'll be an external door there?
Yes.
And it's, it's only a one-bedroom unit, is that correct?
It's only a one-bedroom unit, yes.
Okay. Which is why, from an architectural design, you feel it's okay for the kitchen to be so far away from the so-called living dining area?
Uh, yes. And as you see, it also has like a seating area, so most likely, you know, people eat there too. You know, it will be more like a formal place.
And, and where you have the, the stove, an oven, those would vent out that side wall, or where would, where would the, where would the?
Right. The hood will vent to the right side wall.
And is there, is there a house that's close to that?
Uh, no. That's a parking lot on to that side.
It's a parking lot, okay.
Yeah. And also, we're like 16 feet away from property line.
Okay. And then I guess outside of the kitchen, you have this, uh, paver area. Would, would that be like a patio? Is that what that is?
Yes, a patio. Right now, so asphalt. So they want it something more residential, so we're removing that asphalt and putting pavers on that area.
And that would just service the first floor apartment?
Uh, yes. Or it could be, it's outside, so it could be enjoyed by either one. But the second floor has a nice terrace above, so it was probably more enjoyed by the first floor apartment.
And what about trash facilities? Would those, would, would that be perceived as being in this space, or would it be elsewhere on the property?
I believe they have them on the left side of the property. And it's residential, so they'll, the garbage, you know, they'll, they'll bring out the curb camps.
Yeah, they would bring them out.
Yeah, but they're kept on the left side of the building.
But in terms of the storage, they would be to the, to the left side of the property?
Yeah, which, that's what they're currently doing.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, um, the, the, so you have then the, this large asphalt area, which has a wooden fence that I guess separates what is technically the parking area where the five cars and now the four cars will be parked?
Right. That's going to be eliminated, correct.
And is there, is there, so the, the current fence that is there, will that be maintained moving forward, or is that going to be changed?
Right. We have a new fence on page G100, so it will be updated to a new fence.
And what kind of fence will that be, please?
Uh, that is, uh, let's see, where is, so it's the same material as the terrace, really, it's wood compost fencing.
It's like a white picket fence or something like that?
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, the, I mean, the pavers will not cover the entire area leading up to the fence, is that correct?
Uh, no. It's just that area between the right side of the, of the addition and the new steps.
Okay. So it's a relatively small area in comparison to the?
Correct.
And do you know if, if there are plans on improving the asphalt in the back there?
Uh, yes. There'll be, it will be repaired, and then some of it would actually be taken off, especially on the right side, to put grass.
So the entire area, oh, I'm sorry, say that again, the last part about the grass?
Uh, on the right side, we'll remove the ramp, and we'll remove any additional area of asphalt. That will be replaced with a grass.
Okay. So there will be some intentionality in terms of beautification of this area, because at this point, it's, I mean, it's very exposed, obviously, to cottage place. And the, I think there was a reference made to the possibility of relocating that shed, is that?
Uh, yes.
Has a determination been made about that?
Yes. It's going to be between the, the new grass area and the parking. So on the?
So it'll move from the left side to the right side, or it's on, still on the right side?
It's still on the right side.
Still on the right side.
Yeah. It's just makes, making sure that we have enough room for the four cars, and then, then we'll have the shed, and then from then on is where we're going to just put lawn.
Okay. Then, can we just then go to the, to the second unit? Which you have indicated is a two-story unit, right?
Correct.
And so currently, it is a three-bedroom unit? Nothing is changing in terms of the footprint of this apartment?
No, it's the same. It's actually a two-bedroom.
Well, I see one on the third floor. Is that in the, on the attic floor?
Right. So there's one in the attic.
I'm sorry, you're right, it's two. I was misreading, sorry. There's, the, the two bedrooms that would be facing Fullerton, North Fullerton, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And then your, your, your proposal then is for a new terrace to stand over the pavers, or a little bit bigger than the pavers, or the extension of what is the new kitchen on the first floor?
Correct. Yes.
And so tell us about, about what you're looking at in terms of the construction materials and the ability of this to withstand activity up on that terrace, please?
Right. So we'll definitely have a waterproof membrane, and then we'll, we'll have, I mean, we haven't gone into the details of the final materials for the floor. We can look into raising some wood composite above the waterproofing, and then that's where you will be standing. So it'll be, it'll be like an outdoor deck.
Outdoor. And there would be railing on three sides?
Correct.
Do you have, at this point, a concept as to the height of the railing?
Residential is 36 inches. That's what we're required to provide. Uh, let me see if we have a dimension there. Yeah. Actually, it's more, sorry, it's three foot six. So we're, we're putting three foot six height on the railing.
And will there be external lighting?
Yes. At each of the doors, so on the, on the door on the second floor, there'll be lights for that door entrance and illuminate into the terrace. And then on the first floor, at the door, there's light to illuminate the entrance and the stairs.
And the lighting would only extend as far as, as far as the deck of the terrace? And the lighting would only extend as far as, as far as the deck of the terrace is concerned?
Right.
Would have no bearing on the neighbor, the neighborhood beyond that? I noticed that you have, you have the kitchen sink, which is on that wall that borders with the, with the deck. Do you intend to have water outside, a sink outside on the, on the deck as well?
Sink outside, no.
It could happen, though.
Uh, they're not requesting any outdoor fixture, no. In this case, you're so close to the kitchen, they're very simply, you know, you could just walk the food, walk anything, you're right there, so it's convenient if they want to eat outside.
Alright, and then in terms of the, in terms of the, the third floor, the attic floor, will there be any adjustment to the, that external wall, which again, in this case is facing cottage terrace, cottage place, I mean?
No, there, there's no-
Overlooking the, overlooking the, the new terrace?
No, no changes to, to that wall.
And are there windows on that, on that back wall?
Not on the attic area.
No windows, okay. So there's no concern about children falling out that window onto the?
No.
Deck or anything like that? That doesn't exist? Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Church, do you have any questions?
Uh, I have no questions.
Ms. Harris, do you have any questions?
Yes, the fence that you're talking about before, can you show on the site plan where that will be?
The what, I'm sorry?
The fence?
The fence? So is it going to provide any closure to the parking area? So it's going to go to, to that area? To provide enclosure to that parking area?
Okay, will, will there be a gate, or will there just be an opening?
There'll be an opening.
And then, is the only access to the second floor from that side stair?
That's correct.
But it looks like there's a curb, kind of perpendicular to the addition. How do they access that from the parking?
Uh, no, there's no curb there. They'll be able to walk through the side and up the stairs. Uh, that's what they currently use right now.
What is, what is that double line indicating? Right above the note that says, remove existing exterior stairs?
Oh, this is, it's just part of the, the dimension line, that one.
No, above that?
Above that? Oh, okay, yes, I'm sorry. So there is a curb, yes, you're right, you're correct. Uh, but it's just a six-inch curb. It's, it's an existing curb that is there. Because that's where the asphalt ends and the sidewalk begins.
Got it.
So, sorry, yeah, you're right.
And then on the first floor, in the living room, there's a stair that goes up?
Uh, yeah, that was an old stair that used to communicate to that area, but we need to separate both.
That's going to stay in place?
They, they were okay with leaving it there.
But there's, it's not connected to the second floor at all now? And then are there going to be any air conditioning, condenser units on the site?
Uh, yes, the existing ones, yeah.
And where are those on the site plan?
Um, the existing condenser is on the right side. They're on this side.
They're not on, on this plan, is that right?
Uh, no, I don't have them on that plan, no. But they're the, so we're not making any changes to the HVAC, because they've always been separated into two?
Okay, and no other questions for me?
Mr. Caulfield?
Okay. In your testimony, you said that you were fixing the parking lot. Were you going to repave the parking lot?
Uh, yeah, there's going to be, they're going to fix any, any issues that they have with the asphalt. Yeah, we're repairing the asphalt, yeah.
Okay. Uh, there's an inlet there on the old survey there, is that?
That's correct.
In good condition? And do we know if that is still in use today? I mean, I don't know if you have that expert opinion on that, or have you been to visit the site?
It hasn't been looked into. Um, I can put in the construction drawings to make sure that inlet is working correctly.
Okay. The new fence, you're putting the new fence on the southerly side of the property line, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, especially, yeah, it's basically enclosing the parking.
Except the driveway will be open, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, the whole driveway is open. It's just a little bit here, and then on this side.
Did, is the fence that's up there right now, has it been like knocked into by the cars doing their backouts and anything like that? Do you know of?
Hmm, not to my knowledge.
Okay. And there's enough room for cars to do kind of a semi-k turn to get out of that space?
Yeah, it, it is tight, but again, they've been using it for a while. It's the same parking layout that they had before. So it's been working.
Okay. The parking lot, did you know if it slopes to Cottage Street?
I believe it does, yes.
Okay. My colleague next to me was talking about the entrance or that step and that curb. Is it, would there be lighting? Is there lighting there for that location?
There is lighting at the moment, yes.
Thank you.
More motion light.
Okay. And then, I'll just finish up here, just with a comment in some way, is we're starting to get a lot of those second-story decks in this town. If it was, if it was like, looking at a city, it'd be great, but, you know, you're just looking in the back of abandoned church right now. So you have a light fixture up there on that second floor? Do we know, like, I mean, obviously it will not be a bright light or anything, but?
No, it's, it's, you know, so they can locate the door, make sure, you know, you have that, and just minimal light so they can use that space.
Okay.
Um, yeah, there's no views, but you know, it's an outdoor space, so they can-
Gotcha, alright, thank you.
Right outside.
Mr. Simon?
Just one question. The ramp was for wheelchair access to the medical office?
Correct.
And so, because the use is gone, there's no reason to keep the access?
Correct.
And, that was it, thank you.
Mr. Griffith?
I apologize if you've covered this before, but if you have two apartments, do you have any place to put trash and recycling outside of the apartment? Crater-proof?
Yes, yes, they're currently using the left side of the, of the, of the building, between the, the stairs for the second floor.
When you stand up there, when you're standing like that?
I'm sorry.
You're, you're blocking us, so if you stand on the other side of the screen-
Yeah, okay, sorry. So it's right here. Uh, they currently use that location, and so we're keeping the same location.
This probably has nothing to do with anything on the first floor. There's a stair in the middle, there's a new wall closing up what I expect to be an old doorway. And then there's a landing and three steps and a railing.
Yes, client said he was okay with the stair there going nowhere. I don't know, they like this, the fact that you can go a little higher there.
Understood, I had to ask, thank you.
Yeah.
Just a couple of questions. The existing chain link fence, you're removing that?
Yes.
And it'll be the same type fence along the back property line as along the side that's shown on?
Correct.
Your second sheet? And the existing picket fence, it's kind of in the middle of the parking, that's to be removed?
Correct, it'll be removed.
And then, you, so you're indicating that there'll be a 1,000 square foot reduction in impervious surface, is that correct?
Yes.
And then you did it in percentages, but if my math is correct, there's about a 397, 398 square feet increase in building coverage? So there's a net decrease of about 600 square feet in impervious surface?
Right.
You know, the, you know, um, it's, I know there's a net decrease of 1,000, but I just, in terms of comparing, why justifying the, the building coverage increase variance?
Right.
And then, you've been asked two questions, I mean, you have the paved area going back, because that's where it is, but you just have that narrow strip along the addition. I guess, not sure of the logic of that and the difficulty of paving that, if you're improving the parking lot, and why not just have the sidewalk go back that stretch and eliminate that curb there, which?
Oh, this curb right here?
Yeah.
Well, this is, this is the access to the second floor apartment?
No, 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 I, I understand that, but my understanding from your plan, you're having, the pavement is going to remain in that narrow strip along the addition?
Right.
And then you're going to have a sidewalk, or there's an existing sidewalk that goes to the stairs to the second floor unit?
Right.
And I, I guess my question is, and I'm assuming the change from the asphalt to the sidewalk is why there's a curb there?
Correct.
But why keep that pavement there? Why not just have a, a concrete sidewalk matching and not have to have the curb that I can guarantee you people are going to trip over?
Yeah, well, we'll need, we'll need a curb, because even if, if I, if I move it here, it will still be a curb, so we can-
Right, but, but it, but there's, and I, I guess in my view, there's an expectation, you're leaving a parking area? And going to walk to your unit versus halfway down, suddenly a curb appears, right?
Right, I, I have no problem of extending the walkway to the new area.
It just seems to be a more logical transition point.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's no problem, we can, we can satisfy in the construction documents already.
Just maybe one or two things more. And you're not proposing any changes to how stormwater is currently handled on the property?
Uh, no.
Any other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the audience who have questions for this witness? Or since it's the only witness, if you have any testimony concerning the application? Mr. Tremblak, do you have anything further?
Well, we just, we need the two variances, you know, with the side yard, we're maintaining the same, you know, non-conforming side yard on the southerly side of the property. There's, there's no building on the adjacent property, I don't think there ever has been. So there's no impact really on the adjacent property. And then with respect to coverage, as you already pointed out, Mr. Chairman, we're, we're, we have, we're increasing the building coverage, but we're also reducing impervious by about 1,000 square feet, which is almost, you know, two and a half, three times the, the size of the increase in the building coverage. So I think, as the HPC pointed out, they viewed that, you know, the reduction in the impervious, impervious area with, and, you know, replacement with grass as a significant improvement to the existing condition. So I think, you know, the variances can be justified under C2 criteria and with respect to the side yard, probably also under C1, given the, the, the location of the existing structure and the existing, you know, non-conforming setback. So I think the variances can be justified, and I would hope that the board would approve the application, subject to the plan revisions that have been discussed.
Let me start the discussion with Mr. McCullough.
I'm supportive of the application.
Mr. Church?
Yeah, I'm supportive of the application also.
Ms. Harris?
I'm in favor of the application.
Mr. Caulfield?
I'm in favor. I just want to just ask two things, or just not ask, but to say, on the right side, there's a tree that goes to the second, to the neighbors to go up the second story. When you build that extension, that tree coverage, it's just going to make it up very dark, so when you're there, just maybe trim back that tree, get some light back there. I'm in favor of this application. This is our second commercial turn residential, so one more makes a trend, but we'll keep an eye on it, thanks.
Mr. Simon?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Griffith?
I'm in favor.
I'm also in favor of the application, I think. They're, you know, it's a consistent use in the zone, they're reducing impervious coverage, this is, because it's a consistent use, not a substantial impairment of the zone plan or substantial detriment to the public good. I think they're going to improve the appearance of the property, they're reducing the amount of impervious coverage. I think the only condition is that they, the railing stairs and fence all be made of natural material as recommended by, I'll leave it to you about where the curb is, but, you know, I take that into consideration. Anyone else with any comments or conditions? If not, someone will move the resolution?
Let me just ask you a question. There was a NAGLIA report on this, is, are we, do we need to incorporate anything in there?
No.
That was deliberate?
It was conscious and deliberate. Somewhat, I mean, partially, part of it dealt with prior plans and-
Plans changed.
Partially, I think it was excessive. Given the scope of what was being proposed.
Mostly to accept the application as submitted?
With, with the one condition about the natural material for the stairs and-
With that one condition?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
I'm going to recuse myself on this one.
I started the meeting with a notice, so I must still have it. Take, take notice that Gustavo Madrigal, owner of property at 18 Central Avenue, filed an application with the Montclair Board of Adjustment, variances to construct a second story addition above the existing one-story portion of the house. The property is a corner lot at the intersection of Central Avenue and Williams Street.
Oh, can you see?
Talbot Street, as the notice is not correct.
It's Talbot Street, yeah.
And it's located in the R2, two-family zone district, and is designated on the township tax maps as Lot 13, Block 1510. The applicant requests variances from Montclair Code Section 347-51 for a front yard setback of approximately 13.5 feet from Central Avenue. Front property line where a minimum of 25 feet is permitted, and a side yard setback of 2.15 feet from the northerly side property line where a minimum of 6 feet is permitted. Are taxes in order? Are taxes paid in the notice in order?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Michael, even though the address was slightly wrong, I think there's sufficient information to apprise anyone of concern as to where the property is located?
Agreed. Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
Yes.
State your name and address.
Gustavo Madrigal, 18 Central Avenue, Montclair Newbury.
Okay. Proceed to tell us what you're doing online.
As you summarize, it was, the application is to build a second story on an existing first story that is, I believe is non-conforming. And so that's, and then a small deck in the back as well. So that's, that's basically what the application is for. It's just a family, and I just, I live in the house with my wife and I, my daughter, and like to have a little more space, that's the reason, so.
Mr. Griffith? I think, Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
Good evening.
Hi.
So you indicated that you, your wife and, and child are living, how long have you lived in this house?
Um, approximately fifteen years now.
Fifteen years. And so, you, your, your goal is to put a second story?
Yeah, just add in a bedroom and a bathroom on the second story of an existing first-story structure, yeah.
And currently, the, the house has how many bedrooms?
Okay, let me see. So three, and we're going to add one more.
So there'll be four bedrooms?
So it'll be four bedrooms, yeah. It currently has two bathrooms, so we add one more, so it'll be three bathrooms. So the, the original house is, is quite old, 140 years old-ish. And then there was a first, one-story addition that was added who knows when, but maybe mid-century. And so that was already there, and so we just want to build on top of that existing first floor, that, one-story rather. So no footprint is really being increased, other than a small deck in the back, which is going to be previous. Yes, we're just building on top of an existing one-story structure. And so I recently, by the way, just to tip, I recently had siding done. My goal is to have the same style siding in, in the addition as well, that continue with the same style and so forth. And we did also, I don't know if this is, needs to be mentioned, went to the historical preservation committee, and there's also some notes that, so my architect adjusted some of the comments, which I hope, I think he mentioned that there was some markings that show the adjustments, so we would adhere to those, those recommendations.
So in terms of the, the area that you're, let's first of all, in, in terms of the first floor?
Yeah.
As a result of what you're, you're, of the addition that you're making, are there any adjustments to the first floor itself?
Yeah, so the, that existing, the first, that, that one-story structure that was an addition later, is actually set back about, about, you know, five steps down. And so the idea is that we're going to bring it up, and then just remodel the kitchen and bathroom.
Okay. So what is the dining area, for example?
Right now, is, we use it as a living room, basically, or as a family room.
Elevated.
It's going to be elevated and then could be made into a dining area, yeah.
So as far as, I mean, as far as, um, the neighbors to your north, they would, they wouldn't have a sense of, of the, the work that's being done in order to, to make that elevation. Is that correct?
I, I let them know, you know, I've, I've talked to them.
I mean, they would be aware that...
They'll be aware that, that's going to...
But I say, wouldn't, while it's being done, wouldn't have any real obstruction.
No, no, there's a driveway and there's, even though it's a tight lot, it's in the corner, I understand that, I appreciate it is tight, but I, you know, I, I think we've had a long-term relationship, and I think they would understand I'm trying to, you know, do this work.
I guess part, part of what I'm asking is that, that external wall of the first floor itself is not going to be changed. It's the, when you're doing the elevation, it's really just interior elevation.
Yeah, the interior part is coming up. Yeah, I am adding windows to that, that, but yeah, but just the inside is just the interiors coming up. Yeah, yeah.
And so then you'll be adding windows, is it, is it the...
Yeah, on the north side, or what do they call it?
Two, three. There's one in the office bedroom?
Yeah, and then also one in the dining room. And then there'll be, in the bathroom, I'm switching the location of the bathroom, so the bathroom has a window. Right now, the bathroom doesn't have a window, and just...
The, the, okay, the bathroom currently does not have a window?
The bathroom currently is facing into the wall, like in towards the inside of the house, and so the, the proposal is to move the bathroom facing, so it has a window, yeah, to flip it, basically.
And there's a window over the toilet. Is that, is that what we're seeing?
That's, that's, that's the proposal.
So there'll be three windows on that side?
On that side, correct, yeah.
Okay. I understand, I understand. And the, the kitchen then would be, would be facing, what's that, Cross Street, the other street?
Talbot.
Talbot.
Talbot, yeah. The same location, kitchen's pretty much the same, just upgraded, basically.
All right, thank you. Okay. So then, let's see. Then if we then, okay, so then you'll have an external door leading from the dining room to the deck. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And that'll be the only access to the deck. Is that correct?
Uh, there's also the existing access to the back door. The deck will be a continuation.
Where is, where is that?
You see, from, I guess from the Talbot Street side, there's a, the back door, which is existing there now. It walks through, and then to the left is a little, like, closet, and then to the right you get to the kitchen. So that's going to stay the same location. And then that, but that deck part will then be continuous to the deck that continues to the dining room. There's an existing deck there in the back, in the back door, yeah. Although it's small.
It doesn't really show on the drawing, right? Unless I'm, am I missing something here?
Yeah, it's, it's there. So they see the left side elevation, you see that, that...
I was looking at the first one. Thank you. All right. All right. Then if we then move to the second floor, so you'll have three bedrooms on the, on that floor.
Yeah, so it's existed, currently it's two bedrooms, and then two bedrooms and a smaller bath, a small shower, and then so we're just adding that extra bedroom and a, and a larger bath.
So the, the smaller bathroom, the, the existing bathroom?
Stays the same.
With service bedrooms one and two.
Correct, that's correct, yeah.
That we're looking at here. And so bedroom three would become the primary bedroom, I guess?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, depends what your preferences, yeah, depends on what your preferences, yeah.
And then you have, so then you have windows, double windows in the bedroom three?
That's correct.
And there was a, there was a question, I think, uh...
From the historical, yeah. So if you look at the, the drawings of the house on the, what they call the, what's labeled as the right side elevation, or what I, I call the north side, so the, the windows are a little smaller than the window facing the, central, and the reason being, that side faces my neighbor's driveway, and, and it's also, it's a, it's a quite large three-story duplex, and so we're basically either facing the driveway or facing like the, the, you know, the, the bottom part, and it's not really pleasant. So I wanted to have window, like, windows more on the top part of the wall. And so I originally had maybe more narrower windows, but the historical preservation gave me mention that perhaps you should have the same style. So I have the same style, and I think what they, what their comment was, have the same size. I appreciate it, but I'm looking at a driveway, and so I'd rather have the same style, but just a smaller size. So that's my preference. However, I do appreciate if they want to have the same size matched what's being in the central. I appreciate that the look is obviously the same. It's just I'm looking at, I'd rather not look at a driveway. Also, it is a small, it's a small house. It's, it's a small lot. I think by additional benefit, I think of having that window a little higher, so I could maybe utilize the space underneath a little better, because it's a small space. So I got a bed, or, you know, desk, or, you know, whatever it is, I think, as opposed to having a window right there, I think it provides me more flexibility on how, on how to utilize the room. So that's the idea, mostly because of the view, but also because of the, the functionality, I guess. So I do appreciate the aesthetics, you know, but I think what I was proposing is having at least the same style of window, just not the same size, right? That's, so that's what I was...
And I thought I was reading into the, into the testimony that you had with the commission, that you were wanting to preserve the privacy of your neighbor, but really at the same time, you're trying to preserve your own privacy.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Because it is, I mean...
It's both ways, right? Yeah, it's both ways, so...
Yeah, it's definitely both ways.
Yeah.
And that driveway is, that is their driveway, right?
That's correct, yeah.
And what, I mean, is there a noise that comes through that driveway? I mean, you're...
No, they're, they have, they're family people, too. They have kids, so everyone goes back. It's pretty quiet, yeah.
Thank you very much. Mr. Church.
Yeah, I, just a point of clarification for me. The setback now on that addition that was put on whenever?
Yeah.
Is 7.7?
I'm not sure exact measurements, if that's what it says.
And it should be at...
Yeah, yeah, 7.7.
An actual variance you want. So, let me, let me just say that, when you do this addition?
Yeah.
That side wall going down that driveway isn't going to butt out, like Mr. McCullough, I think, referenced. That won't butt out.
No, no, it's going to just go up.
Just go straight up.
Just going to go straight up, yeah. It's already pretty narrow, yeah.
And it'll go up?
Just one more story, yeah.
Just a story.
And only for part of it.
Got you. Okay, and the neigh, the driveway, you don't utilize that driveway at all?
That's my neighbor's driveway.
Okay. You have yours on the other side?
I, mine's on, mine's on Talbot.
All right, that's all I got.
Ms. Harris.
I just wanted to clarify, the windows that are shown on your right side elevation, are they the height that you prefer, or are they what the historical commission recommended?
It's kind of, they weren't, they weren't exactly clear on the, what the height would be. They just said, the way I understood it was style. And so that, the way I understood the first meeting was, so I have the same style as the, as the front, as you can see, they're like the, you know, the, what do they call them? Double hang? I don't know the term.
Double hang, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, the way I got out of the meeting was just put double hang. So I was like, I told my architect, put double hang, but I wanted the smaller ones.
Okay, so what we're seeing on this page is what you...
It's what I'm, what I, what I'm proposing, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Which, the way I understood their comment was the double hang, so that's why it was, you know, which, I was, I just told him, just do that on the same side, but just same style, the way I told him, same style, but smaller, because what we've just been discussing, yeah.
And then just, I noticed in the photos that your roof leader runs to your neighbor's driveway.
Which one, I'm sorry?
Your, the, your cutter?
Oh.
Runs to your neighbor's driveway.
Does it? Oh, yeah, yeah, it does, yeah.
So just when you do this addition, it should, it should run off onto your own property?
All right, yeah. That should be an easy fix, right? Yeah.
Just one question.
Yeah.
On the second floor, the, the addition is six inches shorter in the front and back? Is that to line up with what's there already, and as opposed to...
Oh, no, I think he, he wanted that to create a little difference on that, but what's existing there, which would, and what's being, in the addition.
Was that because of the HPC, they wanted to see some kind of difference?
Yeah, they said they wanted to have it where the original house, like, if you took the addition away, the original house would still, like, be by itself.
Yeah, I think they said it wanted to be subordinate to the...
So that's why, that's why it's like, I know it seems kind of strange to just have that six, but that's, and, and I think it, it kind of makes sense, because the other addition would be facing north, whereas the other part is facing east. So, you know, I, you know, I think there's a lot of ways to skin a cat, but I think it, like, it looked good enough, and I was like, all right.
Okay, that was it.
Mr. Griffith.
No comments, thank you.
I just want to go over the historic preservation conditions and determine what you are agreeing with and what you're not agreeing with.
Yeah, it'd be good to clarify, yeah, yeah.
So we're, we're clear what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah.
And just, Sinab, I'm, they reviewed it twice, and I'm trying to relate the second conditions to the first conditions, and what their intention was, and, um, so I'm assuming, they, and part of that's because of the, they first said in kitchen condition number two, use double hung windows on the north elevation, which he did, and then comes back with the double hung, and they say, too small. Is that correct?
Yes, that, that is, that is a correct interpretation.
Yeah, but see, so I, maybe I misunderstood, because I just heard double hung, I didn't really hear what it's...
Well, that's, that's all they said. I mean, I don't know what they totally said, but the condition was double hung, not the size.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and you would prefer to have the double hung at the size showing on your plan?
Yeah, for the reasons I described, yeah, yeah.
Then both they, um, well, sticking with the windows, then they added, the second time through, is adjust the windows on the right side elevation to match the height of the corresponding windows on the front elevation. And my understanding from what your testimony was, you want to leave them as you're proposing them, rather than lowering them. Is that correct?
That's correct. So that would be the, I guess, the, the deviation from their second comment would be, I think we agree on the style, just my, my, my request would be just on that side at least, to keep it a little smaller in size for the, for the reason that I discussed.
Okay, and then the first...
Go. Question?
Uh, so the bedrooms have to have fire regress windows, and double hung windows get to be bigger than casements, and you may have to have one window that's fairly large as a double hung?
Oh, no, one will. The, the one facing the, the one facing central will, will be the larger size.
Okay. I'm just trying to give you a heads up. I...
Yeah, he has...
It's all good by me.
Yeah, and, and not only that, that window, that the larger size is going to have a roof, so if you really need to get out, you could get half of the roof to get out there.
I'll take that one.
Yeah.
And then the, the first condition, first time through, said lower the roof line by a couple of feet, and then that became, the roof line should be at least two feet below the height of the existing second story. Do you have a problem with adhering to that?
No, no, I think they're, I, I thought he fixed that in the second drawing, but...
It's, it's almost there.
It's almost there, yeah.
Yeah, I just...
Wait, does he, was he off by a few inches or something, or?
Pretty much, it's like...
Okay. I'll, I'll mention that to him, or if there's some kind of formal minutes that go to him or something.
Okay, and then they're, they asked you to put in railings and...
Oh, they were, they were already there, in the front and the back, and, and the back there, just not there yet, but yeah, I'll be, I'll have railings. I have an 11-year-old child, so of course.
And you, you testified you'll match the final siding?
That's correct.
As best as you can.
You stated that you might have trouble matching. What happens if you can't find the same color or style that you had?
It'll match. I'll have, I'll have a match.
And they did the condition as closely as possible if the same manufacturer's available.
And I just bought it like two years ago, so hopefully, hopefully, as long as the manufacturer still makes it, and, you know, and we can get it.
They worded it nicely, so if he can't get it...
And we can get it, that's the other one, if we can get it, yeah, yeah.
And I assume you have no problem going back to the design review committee with the changes, so they can yell at you again about the size of the windows, and you can say, "Board of Adjustment said you're good. Too bad."
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be great if I could do it via email, yeah.
I, I, I think that their second revision that they did today complies with what they said, so...
Okay, so they, you don't think they have to go back?
I don't think he needs to go back.
Okay. Any other questions from members?
Just like to, to just go back to the second floor plan, because you, you did the design of that, correct?
The architect did it.
Oh, well, I...
But I mean, I, yeah, yeah, I, I proposed it to him, I guess, and he made it happen.
I'm, I'm curious, in terms of, of the way this is designed, at the top of the steps, is that, is that just an opening?
Yeah, that's where, there's an existing pull-down with the, with the door where the attic goes. That's so that little area has, so when you come up the steps, there's, if you look at the ceiling, there's a way. You have to remember, that part of the house is 140 years old.
I see.
Yeah, yeah, so, so it's, it's tight, but, yeah, that's an existing, you know, basically just, we have like a little thing to hold linen, and that's it.
Okay, um, I, I made the comment before about maybe bedroom three is, is the primary?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, even, I mean, even though it's sort of looking at the...
Number two is larger a little bit, yeah.
Slightly larger, but then bedroom one's got two closets, so, so it's sort of interesting.
Yeah, it's, it's quirky, right? It's a 140-year-old house with the...
But, but the, but the half-bath is the larger bathroom, without a doubt. Have you considered, it looks like you have like a sliding door, is that going into bedroom two?
That's correct, yeah.
Had you considered the possibility of a sliding door leading into bedroom three? In other words, when you come up to the top of the steps, that, that could be a sliding door that would provide for privacy in that area, because you're, you...
Oh, so you could, could make it almost like a suite or something?
Well, because coming out of bedroom three and going to the half-bath, you would be exposed to the rest of the floor. You wouldn't have any privacy.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, right now, it is a single family.
No, no, I know, there's a door. You, you see, okay. Here at the top of the steps.
Yeah.
Right. It's open, right? The bedroom's, the bedroom is here, the bath is there, which means that they have to walk this way to get to it, which means that they don't have any privacy.
But that's the bathroom for all of, everything.
Well, there's another...
There's no shower. There's no shower.
Oh, there's no shower in this other, it's just a toilet and a sink?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions from members of the board? Is there any member of the audience who is hiding and has any comments, questions, anything you want to say about the application? Anything further you want to say before we discuss and vote on the application? Start discussion, Mr. Church.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, I, I have no problems with the application, I think that the older houses have real problems with narrowness and smallness, because that's just the way they built them.
Yeah.
And it's hard to make renovations and meet all the standards, especially if you're in an historic district. So, I have no problem with this application, I vote in favor of it.
Ms. Saris.
Uh, I'm in favor of the application as well, I find, I think the setback line that's on the, the survey is kind of funny, when you can see how tiny the actual house on the property would be, and there's clearly no way that you could build anything in that small area, so I'm in favor.
Mr. Simon.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Mr. Griffith. Mr. McCullough.
I'm in favor. I'm also in favor, I, I think, given the location of the existing house on the property, there really isn't another good way to do an addition. Um, I don't think this will result in a substantial impairment of the zone plan or a detriment to the public good. It's taking what I think is a singularly unattractive one-story addition to the building and making it much more attractive. You know, as homes of the neighborhood go, as the Sanborn map, and I have a tax map in my office, it's one of the newer homes, it's, you know, most of those homes were existing in 1890, so you, you have a new. But I, you know, in terms of conditions, the stormwater from the addition should be directed so it does not go towards the neighbor's property.
Okay.
Um, and then, condition two and three from the May 21 Historic Preservation Commission memo, and condition four from the April 29 Historic Preservation Commission memo.
Any other discussion from members of the board? If not, someone want to move.
I'm delighted to see you representing yourself, very nice.
Really? It's not normal, I guess?
It, it varies, I, in, my statement contrary to my profession is, an applications like this, probably you can handle it more quickly and better than with an attorney is.
Yeah, yeah.
And certainly more cheaply.
Well, I'm like, I'm a neighbor, right? You feel more like, you know, more personal that way, and I've been here a while, and I want to stay here, so, anyway, so, appreciate it.
Someone want to move the approval with those conditions?
Motion to approve the application with the conditions stated.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, good luck.
Thank you.
Now, we do motion to go into closed session, and Mr. Church gets to leave, and Mr. Caulfield gets to resume.
And everybody should have a resolution in front of them, go to go into, authorizing to go into confidential session.
Someone want to move that resolution?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? We need to wait a second while we're.
Plugging it or...? [S02] You're unmuted.
Okay. In closed session, we discussed the current litigation involving the Board of Education, the township, and the neighbors, the papers that had been filed with the court subsequent to our last meeting, and discussing our next steps in light of what has transpired. And based on that discussion, I guess I'll make a motion to simplify this, that we direct Mr. Sullivan to write to the State Department of Education, set forth the facts in terms of the settlement between the township and the Board of Education, the subsequent appeal by the neighbors of the permit issued by the town, the hearing held by this board on that appeal which was participated in by the Board of Education, the baseball parents and the neighbors, our decision requiring them to apply to the Board of Adjustment, and our subsequent filing with the court setting forth our understanding of what is provided by the Educational Facilities Construction and Financing Act, and the municipal land use law, and requesting and the implementing Department of Education regulations implementing the Educational Facilities Construction and Financing Act, and requesting the Department of Education for determination based on those facts and the improvements as to whether that were proposed and largely constructed at Woodman Field, whether they were required to apply to the Board of Adjustment for approvals for those facilities. That...
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Where are we adjourned? Where are we with meetings and applications?
Pretty light. Next month, we have 21 Van Black use variance on June 4th, as well as short application hopefully for historic marker sign approval at the Israel Crane House. And then we have 120 Watchung Avenue, which I think is going to be a big one for the convenience store. I mean, actually, the gas station, they're trying to replace the automobile service sector with a convenience store.
We've had one of those before at another site.
Which property is that?
120 Watchung Avenue. It's the Gulf Gas Station.
The gas station at the corner of Watchung and Pork.
The dangerous intersection.
That's going to be dangerous.
Yes.
That sounds like a terrible...
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? So we'll see you on June 4th is the answer to the question. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See you on June 4th. Thank you all.